According to the county police department, you're the first one to get it.
Yeah. A couple of announcements, there's a clipboard in the back for anybody that might want to sign up for the Historic Folsom Residents Association. Michael Kozlowski, who's not here, he had a conflict, he was not here about two hours ago, and he said he regrets. We should be able to do it here. But we'll do a quick rundown on the rules. This is a little bit like Republican primaries, where there's so many people, I think you've got to perform. So we tried to kind of narrow the question, give everybody the answer, respond with an vote pair sometime at the end, for the audience to ask questions. The event is focused on the Historic District, both Historic Districts, so I've been asked to tell the candidates to please keep their statements and answers in the comments and agenda. The responses from candidates are limited to two minutes in length, two minutes opening statement, two-minute response, two-minute answer to the questions I ask, and two-minute answer to the, when the audience asks questions, two-minute closing statements. If any of the candidates have written their literature and signed and this sort of thing, I'll get two pens. In the back, and it's stacked up for you to use it, if you really need to use it by any of the candidates, or if you're signing. Something knowledge, I have to acknowledge Dino Prada, who was the president of Folsom Residents Association. He told me he has been for a long time, ever since we founded this association in my living room, and Ben and I, I think, set it up. Timekeeper, speaking of that, is Ben Fuentes over here. Keep an eye on him, he'll raise his hand when your time is up. The host and greer Cindy Ferris, Cindy, back there, thank you very much for that, and a special thanks to Bob Colifer for the using of the facility here.
Can you hear me okay? Does this need to be closer? I've found that as I get older and deffer, my voice becomes more quiet. I don't know quite why that happens, seems like that would be the obvious, but I'll try to speak up. My name is Glenn Fate, I've been a resident of the Historic District for 53 years, or a little over that, believe it or not. I moved here when I was two now. Anyway, I've been here a long time, and seen a lot of changes in this city. I want to just start with this statement. About 24 years ago, I got really involved in a hot issue in the community, along with many of my neighbors, and I got so upset about the issue that I decided to run for city council. I ran for city council, and two big surprises came about from that experience, in addition to being surprised that I won, the third seat that was available by about 200 votes. The first thing I found out is it was one of the most fun things I've ever done in my life, was running for the city council. So even though we have 12 people here, I would encourage all of you to think about it in the future, it's really something that's fun to do. And the last surprise was that I ended up making six good friends out of the people I campaigned with all the time. You got to know them, you got to know them well, and that's how collegiality comes about, is campaigning with one another like that. In fact, we got, and it was a hot campaign, I mean, we were not subtle in our arguments, but during the very last forum we had, we had gotten to know each other so well that we all agreed we would give each other's opening statements. And we did, and they, I don't know, I think Bob Holden just got up and said, "I have this old house," and, you know, the whole, "my opening statement." So it's going to be a great experience for you, and I hope the times that we're in today doesn't change that. All right, let's get started here. I've got my questions out of order already. Again, I'm trying to figure out how to start this. Let's kind of go right to left, and let's start by Mr. Bailey, okay? We'll give you the first shout, and then each of you can give a two-minute response. These questions, by the way, were formulated by a number of the residents, and reflect some of our important issues as residents here. First question is...
Are you going to be opening statements?
Oh, oh no. Gosh, there's another 20 minutes, come on, right here. Opening statements.
I wanted to say one thing. I'll raise my hand when there's 30 seconds left for you, okay, so you can wind up, and then I'll raise my hand a second time, which means your time's up.
And don't ask him what his hand is going to raise the third time.
Okay.
Okay. By the way, when you give your opening statements, I'll give you a chance to introduce yourself instead of me spending a whole lot of time doing that, you can, so be sure and give your name when you introduce yourself, and give your opening statement. Let's start with Mr. Bailey. Would you stand up too, because the television camera is not going to be able to pick you up if you sit?
Do you want to start at the end or is that...
No, you, and then we'll go around, and try not to have everybody start first.
Hi, guys, and welcome, everybody. My name's Scott Bailey. I suspect some of you are residents here for nearly two years. I'm still wearing blue?
There, that's it.
Do we need this?
Yes.
Still wearing blue, and I say that because for 35 years, I wore the blue of the Folsom Police Department as a reserve officer. I sat just to the, to the audience's left in a chair, and got to watch all of the city council meetings for the last five years. I recognize many of your faces as people that have turned in blue cards to me, and gotten up and spoken at the meeting, especially Ben here. So, yeah, it's always welcome, and I love it, but I didn't really prepare anything specific tonight, I just wanted to introduce myself, and come here tonight to hear what you have to say, to hear some of the issues of the area, I think I kind of already know them. There was a special city council meeting that you guys did a great job organizing, and I sat right over there that night, in the uniform, to do what I need to do for the city. But volunteered for it for 35 years, and very proud of that, wouldn't have changed a thing. But hats off to all of you, you've created quite a powerful organization here, and I admire that. You are a force to be reckoned with in Folsom, and that's great. That's about all I've got for right now. Looking forward to your questions.
You pass it to Barbara, and we'll go that direction. Well, this one can go on this side, and this one can go on that side, okay?
I didn't want to spring it, was it?
Just stand in front of him.
Okay, hi, I'm Barbara Leary. I moved to Folsom in 1992, attracted by its treasures that include our Historic District, Lake Natoma with its trails, and the ability to get away from the bustle of city life, our vibrant community, and good schools. Within a year of arriving, I became involved with residents of the Historic District in the effort to preserve the district's character in the face of a Lake Natoma Bridge proposal, which had the potential for disrupting the nature of the district and its historical attributes. We were successful in getting mitigation, one of them being the now-famous arches on the bridge, and in having improved access to Sutter Street from Folsom Boulevard. I've since worked on several projects to preserve Folsom's history and natural legacy through my activities with the Folsom Historical Society, the Heritage Preservation League, the Chinese Heritage Museum Project, Friends of Folsom Parkway, as well as the Parks Commission and the Arts and Cultural Commissions. My commitment is to work with the residents in the district and other stakeholders to preserve, protect, and enhance the jewel that is the origin of the modern-day Folsom. There are competing interests coming to agreements that can serve both sides of some of these interests has been difficult. The growth that has taken place and the increased use of the area by visitors has strained the capacity of streets that were never designed to accommodate thousands of people and cars. This has left residents at times at odds with business, their goal being one of a quiet coexistence with the busier part of the district. An integral part of the district, the waterfront, is now facing development proposals that could create increased traffic and heavy impact on the natural resources bordering the district. Much work is in order as the competing forces are strong, but I believe that reasonable solutions for all can be made. As a council member, my commitment is to ensure that the district and natural areas are cared for and preserved for perpetuity. Thank you.
I'm going to sit on Rob's lap.
We're very close.
Hi, folks.
Yeah, it's looking good, all right, yeah, don't start the time yet.
My name's Mark Moore, I don't have a tag, because they ran out, so don't start the time yet.
You don't want to start? Let me go.
I'm a former firefighter, 30 years, I'm retired now, and I want to thank you, folks, for inviting us all here, I'm really excited to be a part of this. The Folsom Historic District Association and the surrounding residents are truly the keepers of our town's history, and what I consider to be the heart of Folsom, past and present. In a real way, I am an alumni of sorts of the district's business owners. For seven years, I owned two businesses in extremely popular tourist locations, one on San Francisco Fisherman's Wharf, the other on Santa Cruz Beach Boardwalk. So I know how it is, and I know how it goes, I know the ups and downs, and the good and the bad, I understand the challenges of making it all work, I feel your pain, but I also feel the extreme pride of accomplishment that you must all feel. It's not a small thing to establish a business in a very special environment like this, it's a really big deal. And above all, I too experienced the vital importance of the business owners working together for that one common goal, to help one another so that everyone has a success story. And to those of you who live in and around this Treasure District, I understand too that it can be a mixed bag, the traffic, the parking, the crowds, the noise, I'm sure that it's not easy nor very pleasant at times, and there's no way of sugarcoating it, it's going to get worse. There's more coming, we all know it, with what, with the, with the growth looming in the near future. It will be up to our future civic leaders whether they will listen to the real experts, you folks, the residents and the business owners of our Historic District. And will they be open to first learn, and then act on what is best, or will they put, or will they put blinders on and forge ahead, void of common sense and compassion for the people who are affected the most by the decisions that will be made, and that's you folks? I look forward to learning more about the Historic District today, and in the months to come. Thank you, thank you.
You want to, you want me to go?
Otherwise, we'll throw everything off-kilter.
What's that? I started off going backwards.
Hi, everybody, I'm Rob Ross. I'm running for city council to ensure that Folsom continues to be viewed as the model of city innovation, economic strategies, and plentiful well-paying jobs, and the area's best parks and trails. You know, most importantly, we need to preserve our residents' sense of belonging to a vibrant community and retain Folsom's small-town feel. I've owned a local technology business for more than 30 years, I specialize in what they call cloud hosting software for the medical industry, and I think it's important to have a diverse set of skills on our city council. And my expertise in technology will add a lot to the city council, and help us gain efficiencies, lower costs, and provide significantly improved transparency to the residents. I volunteered within the city as the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission for six years, where I worked hard to enhance Folsom's amenities and our activities. I formed strong relationships within the city and in the departments under the city to understand exactly how the city operates, and which is why I believe I can be an effective leader and start, start day one with the ground running. I think I have a few principal ideas that I want to get accomplished. I'm a committed advocate of our parks and trails. My love for our amenities is a reason I chose to be on the Parks Commission. As a commissioner, I recommended the construction of three parks, the Johnny Cash Bridge, and the construction of the soon-to-be-built $8 million Johnny Cash Art Trail that will require not a cent from our residents or from the city. And I'm a lover of natural park developments, I don't believe that every park needs to be, have a ballfield or tennis courts. I strongly oppose housing development in our Corporation Yard, and would like to see natural, open gathering spaces where people of all ages can enjoy our riverfront. Finally, I'll ensure that Folsom, the city of Folsom, always has a balanced budget and maintains strong fiscal responsibility and an economic position by streamlining city services, reducing debt, and living within our means. Thanks.
Yeah, we as Historic Residents are flexible, so we'll change the order, you go ahead, we'll go that way.
Well, good evening, everyone, thank you all for being here and taking an interest in local politics, and thanks to all those whose hard work made this event possible. My name's Chad VanderVeen, it's good to be here for the third time. I'm running for city council because I really believe I have a duty to leave our city to our children in better condition than we found it. I'm confident that, as your councilman, I can do precisely that through the steps I'll outline in my plan I call Ski Folsom. Ski Folsom stands for Safety, Kids, and Infrastructure, and it's the heart of my campaign. It's about protecting our residents, helping chart courses for our children to be successful, and investing in innovative infrastructure solutions, because I believe these are the fundamental steps we must take to ensure Folsom's distinctive nature remains untarnished for us and for future generations of Folsomites. I also promised tonight to try and be as concise as possible in my answers, given that there are 11 of us, so I thank you all for being here, and I look forward to your questions.
Okay, Carrie?
Welcome, everybody, thanks for coming, and thanks to Dino and the rest of the Historic District residents for putting on this forum. Again, you guys have done this, I think, every time I've run for city council, and it's a great opportunity to talk directly with the people that live in the district. I know many of you, you know, have been on the city council for the last 20 years, and four years on the Planning Commission before that. During that time period, we've done a lot of things. We've built three fire stations, we just opened the latest one today, we've built many, many parks, we've built, in that time period, about 40 miles of trails, we built a $12 million parking structure in the Historic District that we're all working hard to get more people to actually use, and we revitalized Sutter Street, and revitalization of Sutter Street, that argument started in about 1965, and we finally got it done about 10 years ago. I'm experienced on the council, as you guys all know, I have represented the city in numerous regional boards and commissions, Regional Sanitation District Board, Sacramento Transportation Authority, Sacramento Placerville Joint Powers Authority, the Southeast Connector, which is the White Rock Road and Grantland Road Extension from Eldorado County to El Grove, LFO, and a number of other regional boards and commissions. I've been part of a council that has figured out how to balance budgets, even when we didn't think we could during economic downturns. We spent our reserves down to about $4 million, now we're up to about 18 on ballpark $200 million budget. I am an engineer, small business owner, and 34-year resident and homeowner in the city of Folsom. Don't live in the Historic District, but I live very close. I think most of you that have ever called me know that I've called you back, if you have a question, I get the answer, if I don't have the answer, I find the answer, and together, we all work together to find solutions to whatever problems we have. In this council election, experience matters. Thanks for your attention.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Rawls, I'm a 30-year Folsom resident, I've been married for 20 years, I have three children, and the reason I'm running for city council is for nearly the last two years I've been on the Planning Commission. And while sitting on the Planning Commission, I began to see some things that I didn't really like, which is, I felt like the people's voice in Folsom wasn't, wasn't always represented, and that's what made me decide to go ahead and run for city council. I really hadn't thought much of doing this up till about, maybe a year ago, just over a year ago. And one thing I can promise you, I've been in this town for a long time, I have no hidden, hidden motives, I did not seek any outside endorsements from any large groups, I'm one of the few that are up here that did not. I am truly running for city council to be the voice of the people. There's a lot of faces in here that have came to the Planning Commissions and heard me speak, or seen videos from when I have spoken, and if you take the time to come to a meeting or to watch any of those videos, you will see that, that my intentions are pure, that I really am for the people of this town, and I'm not going to do anything shady to, to disrupt our quality of life here in Folsom. It cannot be bought, and my best interests are representing you guys and what you want, so that's why I'm seeking to be elected this year. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Jennifer Lane. I came here 38 years ago to do my student teaching at Blanche Sprints. I eventually got a job at Oak Chan, and brought my son, of 10 years old at the time, with me to experience this great town. We could have chosen many other districts, but we chose Folsom based on Lake Natoma and the historicness of the town. I love antiques, I love history. So, I taught 3rd grade, and I used to bring my class to City Hall to meet the mayor. I did that for at least 20 years. We would meet the mayor and do a mock city council meeting. I felt it was important that my students learned about their community. That field trip is still happening, even though I retired seven and a half years ago. Ernie and Sheldon and I do that with all the 3rd grade at Oak Chan. From that field trip, we go down to the History Museum and learn about the history of this town. Many of the parents that join us have never been to the Folsom History Museum, it's a new experience for them as well. It's always been a favorite of my students to learn about this great town, and what better way than to, to have residents participate in their city's history and their civic duty? So, I just want you to know, my saying is "people before politics," and that's because I've been one of these residents here in Historic District that have been to City Hall over 30 years, and not getting any satisfaction, rarely do we get any voice, so I want to be your voice. I also want to save the City Corporation Yard, 16.4 acres for a Learning Center for Kids, Nature Center. Thank you.
First, let me say thank you to Landmark Baptist Church for having us here today. My name is Kenneth Brown. My family and I moved here three years ago. We lived in North Carolina for 19 years, and before that, I was in Chicago for many number of years with my wife, and before that, I was in the military. So I served four years in the military, Marine Corps. I got out, and I've seen the world, I've been all over the place, I've seen traffic problems in big cities and traffic problems in small cities, I've seen a lot in my life. All the information that I've gathered has led us, my wife and I, to this area. About three years ago, we started looking for a place to live and to raise our children. Folsom came highly recommended from friends of hers, we came here and we looked around and fell in love with the place immediately. I've decided since that point, we decided we were going to stay, and a funny thing happened. For the rest of the places that we've been to, the acclamation of the place took a long time. North Carolina was probably about eight, nine years before we got to the point where it felt like we were home. You people have made me feel home, here, you've made me feel happy to be here. I want to give back to you, I'd like to be able to do something for the community, have an ear for you to call and listen to. I know when I called, I didn't get an answer. Well, I got an answer, but it wasn't the communication that worked best for everybody, it worked best for them and not for me, or any of the people that I was representing at the time. So my main thing is, I want to make sure that we, I can help Folsom in any way possible. If that means city council, then so be it, and I'd appreciate it for people's vote, I'd love to get your vote. Any questions you might have, I'd be happy to answer.
Good evening, everyone, my name is YK Chalamcharla, and we visited the Folsom in 2002, just for a friend's birthday party, we fell in love at first sight, and later on, we moved to Folsom. So, once again, thank you for organizing this event, and thank you for all the residents coming here and listening. And I'm running for city council with purely a service mindset, let's make things better. And I was born in a village in southern India, and when I walk down in our Historic District, I feel the same one. Unpaved side roads, and you can go, and some dirt comes up, and all those, I feel the same way, and all the small, small homes where I grew up, and when I'm going around and thinking, I think we want to preserve this town, like the same way we all love. Certainly, I know I can certainly talk the way I talked at the Harris Center two weeks ago or three weeks ago, we have the traffic problem, we're going to have a water problem, we still have all those because Folsom is organically growing. I was talking to my coworkers, I'm a state employee over 12 years, and they said, "We have a debate in Historic District." They said, "Yeah, we spent," they were from Roseville and El Grove, "yeah, we spent last weekend at Historic Districts, walking around on all the antique shops," because people are coming from everywhere. How we can preserve the small-town feel, but with a rich history, that's where I'm going to work on. I may not know everything, but I'm a good listener, and since I'm working for a public sector for the last 23 years, I know how the government works, where the grants are and fronts are for the Small Districts enhancements, I'll fight for it, to keep our Historic District the way it is we all love. You can count on me. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Aquino, thank you for having us. I'm a 15-year resident of Folsom, but I'm a 42-year resident of Sacramento County, I grew up in Fair Oaks, on the bluff just overlooking the river. I spent my high school and college years and beyond rowing on Lake Natoma, that's how I met my husband. I am a life and health insurance broker, we have a small family agency here in Folsom, and for the past four years, I have served on the Folsom Cordova School Board, and I have loved every minute of it. Folsom has been a great place to live and work and raise our family, but we are a growing city, and we have some challenges. And I am running for the city council to bring my four years of governing experience and the relationships that I have with other regional leaders to address those challenges head-on. We will not agree on all of the issues, I can promise you that, but I will promise you that you will always know where I stand. I don't sugarcoat, if you come to a school board meeting, you will find that out, but if I am elected, I will pledge to do four things. I will be accessible, I will listen, I will do my homework, and I'll make common sense decisions. Thank you.
Thank you all. You changed chairs back again, all right. For symmetry, and you had to wait so long, Sarah, to have your statement, we'll start the first question with you and go back.
Okay. Why can't I have to switch places?
Okay. "Recent and proposed development on Sutter Street is causing a shortage of parking for employees and patrons. The residential neighborhoods are becoming a parking lot for the Sutter Street businesses and light rail riders. What will you do to ensure that there is adequate parking for Sutter Street," which is the first part of the question, "and to remove business and light rail traffic from the residential streets?"
Well, the first thing is something that I don't think the city of Folsom can do, I think it's something that the merchants' association has to do. And that is, if you own a business here in Folsom where you have employees, you and your employees should be parking either in your designated spaces, if you have them in the alley, or you should be parking in the top floors of the parking garage. If you work at Arden Fair Mall, you are not parking in the front row. If you work at Bel Air or Rayleigh's, you are not parking in the front row. If you work at the State Capitol, unless you're a legislator, you're not parking in the Capitol parking garage, you're parking two or three blocks away. So I don't think that's something that the city can enforce, but I think the merchants have got to band together and insist that that happen. I do think, any time that I've been to the parking garage, it's never full, so I do think we could use some, some better signage, more signage, to direct folks to the parking garage. I understand that that is on the way from Karen Holmes. The other thing that I'm thinking might be good is, in front of what used to be Folsom Lake Bank, now Central Valley Community Bank, there are two short-term parking spaces, I believe 20 minutes. I think we should explore adding some other short-term parking spaces, at least one or two spaces per block on Sutter Street. That way, if you're somebody who just wants to run into Snooks for an ice cream cone, you ordered something from Hopzing to Go, you can just run in there, grab your order, your food, and head out, and then that way, people who are here long-term, you know, six hours for the day, are not taking up the parking on Sutter Street. Did I get all of it? Did I get all of it?
I heard it all.
I'm going to give a shot. I know we do have a good parking structure already. And I don't know whether we all opposed when the light rail was coming to the Historic District. Not knowing the history, I still believe, you know, there are so many people, they want to still have, not in polluted cars, driving out to when they are visiting the Sutter Street. So, certainly, you know, they are going to come. But since the traffic and people are visiting, not just from across our Folsom, it's from everywhere, I think, which I repeated before. So, with your organization in association with city council and the local businesses, we have to find a next appropriate way how we can accommodate the parking. It is, we're not going to ignore it, but at the same time, it is, since eighteen fifty's, our town established, and we are saying it is one of the greatest historic districts in this area. So, people are going to come, and all the antics, it is working together and trying to put the problems on the table and how we can fix it. Probably, that's going to be my approach for sure. And making sure it is your concerns and issues has been clearly heard, and a reasonable, agreeable proposal and solution should be put in place. That's going to be my approach. Thank you.
Past couple of years, I've spent, we've spent quite a bit of time on Sutter Street. So, the parking is hard on the street itself, right in front of the store. And so, if you want to just jump out and run inside, it's not going to be a pleasant day for you, I guess. But we do have a parking deck there. And the parking deck, as she had said, is rarely full when I've been there. You know, there's usually a place on top or someplace in there that you can park and actually get out and go walk. Furthermore, the rest of the time, what we do is we take an Uber up there if we need to. You know, if you absolutely have to go there for something, and it's going to be during the time that school's in, and there's a lot of traffic and people are parking, and you just want to deal with it, you can take an Uber up there. As far as fixing the problem, while we still have parking spots available in the parking deck, I don't see building anything else to try and alleviate the parking situation until there's absolutely no place else for these people to park. And then we can look into it from there. That's the best I got.
So, this has been a problem for probably thirty years for residents, especially those on Figaroa and Mormon Street and the side streets. We can't afford another parking garage, but I think we should do our best to think out of the box on that. I think the merchants do not park at the top story enough. I know they park in the neighborhood. Figaroa Street especially gets impacted. If you live where I do on Cilly, you walk downtown. But as far as, when we have a big event, such as the Peddlers Fair's coming up, Folsom Lives coming up, all these big events that come to the Historic District because everybody loves us so much, they need to provide shuttles. Shuttles is the future. I mean, it's got to be for Old Town. I believe the residents should have permit parking and that the city should help pay for this, maybe get CAPS to give tickets if people are parking in front of your house. This is a pattern that the rest of the city and residents somewhere else, that live somewhere else are not, they don't really care that they're parking in the neighborhood. And the merchants don't seem to care either. So, it's a thirty-year problem that hasn't been solved yet, even with the parking garage. And I walk my dog down to Sutter Street pretty often, and I would say that parking garage is maybe full on Saturdays, but a lot of people do not park in that parking garage because they say it's too far to walk from one end of the street to the other. Thank you.
My course of action would be to set up a meeting right away with the Historic Folsom Residents Association, the Merchants, City Council, and just get in the same room, just like we are here, and talk about it and find a way to make it work. It seems like nobody's ever put forth the full effort on making it work. I think permit parking is great. I definitely think residents in the Historic District shouldn't have to deal with drunk people throwing up in front of their house and broken bottles every weekend. I've seen it. I've seen it go down for years in the Historic Area. And I think if everybody just kind of sat together and brainstormed an idea, it would be pretty easy to solve the bulk of these problems. And I definitely think the preferences should be more on the people that are living there rather than the people that are trying to go down there and party. And if we can come up with a plan to protect the housing and the streets there, Uber is a very viable source, or shuttles for Entertainment District, because when South of Fifty is built down, we've got another twenty-two, twenty-five thousand more vehicles on the road. If you think it's bad now, it's going to get a lot worse. And you have to have someone that's proactive and willing to get in there and actually get it done and not give you lip service. And I think that would be the first place to start, is just a roundtable meeting with everyone who has skin in the game in attendance.
Aaron's idea was a really good one, so we did that about six years ago. We did it in this room. And we still didn't find a solution to the problem. So, it probably means there needs to be a couple more meetings. And I think part of the issue here is that the Merchants Association has one focus, and the Residents Association has another focus. And most of the time, there's not a big conflict between the two. There is when the Chamber's doing a big event, which they do a couple of times a year. And when the Merchants Association is doing big events, which we know they do at least four, if you add the Christmas tree light into that, that's five. I was very happy, when I was attending an event, a fundraiser for the Historical Society last night, to find that many of the merchants are keeping these cards at the front counter. So, it's basically encouraging people to park in the parking structure at the steakhouse, to park in the Historic District parking structure. And I think that's a good start. The problem is, my guess is, that the people that saw this maybe didn't park there to start with. Maybe they will the next time. I agree with the fact that we need to get the merchants to have there all of their employees parking in the parking structure. We've adjusted the parking requirements in the parking structure so that light rail riders can park there. Remember, initially, we weren't allowing them to do that. So, I think that's been an improvement. And I think we, you know, there's probably a lot of other things that we can do, but we need to look at things as time moves forward. And then we also need to look at the fact that there were other parking options explored about twelve years ago, one of which was to build a second story over Trader's Lane. And that's something that I think we need to look at. We probably would have done that a while ago, had the redevelopment agency funding not gone away. But that's been a bit of a problem because that was estimated to be ten to fifteen million dollars that we don't have anymore. So...
Okay. Well, in my experience and a lot of people I've talked to, I think the problem with the parking garage is that it is great when it's not being used, but when it is being used at big events, and you try and park at the top and try and leave after that big event, that's probably the last time you use the parking garage. It's difficult to exit when it's really busy. Same kind of goes for the garage under Sutter Street Steakhouse. So, I think there's some simple things we can do to address the parking issue right now. And that, first thing is to, and it came up earlier, encourage ride sharing. That's Lyft, that's Uber. And work with the Merchants Association to get merchant discounts given to those people that use Lyft or Uber and show a receipt. Hey, if you spend six bucks to take a Lyft, you get a free beer at Sam Horn's. It pays for itself, and there's one less car parked there. Second, I would love to explore getting parking meters in the Historic District. Free parking in the lots, but street parking, I believe, should be metered. Third, free shuttle from the Pavilion Center, which if you don't know where that is, is where Heschall's and Pete's and Coffee Republic is. If we could run a free shuttle from there, I know lots of folks like me who live on that side of the river, we could then suddenly technically walk to Sutter Street without having to drive down there across the river. We could walk to that shopping center, take the shuttle, and be there without a car. And lastly, I agree with Jennifer. I think we do need to explore resident parking permits. They put up with a lot for a long time, and I think it's time they got their streets back.
Whenever you're ready, I'm good to go.
You're good to go.
All right. So, you're just going to wait till I start, then?
I am.
All right.
Who's this?
All right, I've got, I do that well. I'm a politician. I do that. That's what I do. Jeez. I think it's a thirty-year-old problem that has been addressed so many times that people are sick of addressing it anymore. The parking permits in the Historic District has been addressed many, many, many times. And I think that we can solve a couple of these problems with a few simple things that may work for everybody. And times have changed enough, and the landscape of the Historic District has changed enough to where we might be able to accomplish these. The first is to have our merchants in the Historic District, when we talk about their employees parking on the top of the parking garage, I'd rather see them not park in the parking garage at all. I'd rather see them have some sort of a way where we can incentivize them to park either down at the Glenn Light Rail Station or even the Iron Point Light Rail Station. It's less than a five-minute ride up there. And if we can give them some way to get on light rail free and utilize those parking lots, that would take a lot of load off of Sutter Street in general. The other thing is, is that I think the parking garage is great. The studies show it's generally forty to forty-five percent empty. So, how do we get more people to park there? I can tell you that one of the things that I hate when I pull in the parking garage is I have to drive the entire parking garage before I find a spot or know what floor a spot's on. And we can solve some of this with technology. If you've been into a parking garage that has an LED sign that simply says, there's five spots on floor three, we can just go right up to floor three and park. It'll be much easier. And we can use the technology to direct people to the parking garage. It makes a lot of sense. It's easy to do. It's affordable, and it ultimately will save costs. Lastly, we need to do something to keep parking out of the residential areas. And I believe timed parking may be an answer to that as well. So, one of the problems is, is people go from partying down on Sutter Street, right up into the Historic District because it's closer. If we didn't allow that parking at night or did permit parking at night, it might be a solution for that area. And that's my solution.
You've got to get all the way up. Okay. It's been at least thirty years we've had this issue come up. And yes, there was a meeting about six years ago, Carrie, and I sat over there. That issue, I remember, was the Entertainment District and the parking. That was the two big topics that night. I work out at Cal Expo. I work out there every single week. And there's a, of course, there's a lot of large parking lots. But I said to the security guard at the gate the other day, I said, what are all those cars out there? They said, oh, that's longest a Cracker Barrel. All the employees at Cracker Barrel, which is clear over on Howe Avenue, are shuttled over, and they use the Cal Expo parking lot. So, I agree completely. Shuttles are a good solution. My son just turned twenty-one a little while back. He likes to hit Sutter Street a little bit here and there. He calls Uber. That's what Rob was saying. Uber, Lyft, great solutions for all that. I get my hair cut right down there on Sutter Street. And often, I can't find parking. And some of it's due to the construction. I think that Scott Seafood and the Willamette Winery is going to be a great addition. I love the architecture. I love the fact it looks historic. And I'm looking forward to the construction being over. But because of that, I find myself having to park, not in the street, and this is like ten o'clock in the morning on a weekday. I have to go to the second or third level down at the parking structure. It's a very short walk. I don't mind it. I get to walk through the beautiful area down there. It only takes a minute to get through down there. The Trader Lane parking structure that's been discussed, that would probably happen, I suspect, city council will vote for it if the tax measure goes through. I said at the forum, I'm against a tax measure, but if it goes through, that's what the city of Folsom residents want, I think everybody up here, if elected, will shepherd and spend that money wisely. I suspect that will be kind of on the top of the list. And as far as residential parking, you can't stop stupid. You can't stop rudeness. But you can have the police department come out and give them tickets.
I think almost all the ideas have been discussed this evening already. I am a strong proponent of having permit parking in areas that are as impacted as the Historic District. And the way that those things are implemented are different in each area that they're implemented in. This is like a big-city problem in a very small town. It would allow the residents places to park. They're usually, allow people to park for one to two hours, depending on the time of day. And residents are also allowed to have guest permits for when they are having people over and need a place to park. The other thing that I'm a strong proponent of is using more public transportation. And we've all gotten spoiled driving around in single cars, not using shared rides, not doing car pooling to get out and about. And I think it's time for people to look at using more shared rides in addition to using public transportation. The light rail station down at Iron Point is often empty, particularly in the evening. The light rail station at Glenn is also mostly empty, particularly in the evening. Light rail runs late. Again, people that are working in the district could use light rail. Giving them free permits is a good idea. And the other thing that we need to get people to use light rail, that we need to help them get to light rail, is improving signage at the beginning of the city as people come in off of Folsom Boulevard. And we also need to improve the signage to get people into the parking garage. So, this is something where we all have to take responsibility and work with the residents of the Historic District on coming up with plans that they feel will help them the best. Thank you.
Well, after ten of my compadres, if you're waiting to hear something new and unique, it's probably not going to happen. But they had a lot of great ideas. I agree with all of them. Some of them stole some of my really good ideas. Chad for one, and Barbara. So, if we just want to reiterate, there's a lot that can be done. My biggest thing is public transportation. We have to get people out of their cars. And I know this isn't real easy. We've talked about this, not for thirty years, we've been talking about this forever. But we have to figure out a way to get people out of their cars to get less cars. Now, as it was mentioned, we're going to have more cars. And as I mentioned in my opening speech, that they're coming, folks. We've got a lot more people. We're not getting any bigger in space, but we're going to get a lot more crowded. So, Chad's idea, my idea too. I think it's one of the more unique ideas to have some kind of incentive, some kind of a reward program for folks that do come on the light rail, come on the stage, come on their bikes, come by Uber, and have them have some kind of an incentive, some kind of a reward program where they get a discount at the merchants or something of that favor. Plus, Uber, perhaps we can partner with them as well, and we can get more involved in that aspect. We might be able to use Uber more. Other than that, they all had some great ideas, and they were all mine, too. And anyway, thank you.
Okay. We're going to question number two. Whoops. That's why we cut the questions down from sixteen. We would be here till about five in the morning, I think. The next question, Sutter Street has become predominantly a place for consumption of alcohol. Bars, wine tasting rooms, and breweries have caused serious problems to many Historic District residences, including public drunkenness, excessive noise, trespassing, drunk driving, and trash and human waste. And boy, could I tell you stories where I live. Anyway, what will you do to prevent these problems? And let's start down here.
You had to listen to everybody else last time. Didn't you get the first question?
I'm going to steal everybody's idea. That's a, again, that's a forever issue. When I was a firefighter, I hated to work on Friday nights and Saturday nights. Because guess what? Most of my calls at one and two and three in the morning had to do with alcohol consumption, had to do with somebody acting dumb because of that. So, I always knew it was coming, and I didn't look forward to it. That's something that's going to happen, folks. We have bars here. People are allowed to drink as long as they're twenty-one and over. Obviously, our police is the answer. We have to educate our bartenders and our servers. And if somebody needs to get cut off, somebody needs to get cut off. Now, it's easy for us to stand up here and say that. But that makes sense, right? I mean, that's what we want. That's what we expect. So, it starts at the point of consumption. So, our bartenders and our servers and our owners of our bars and our pubs and things need to be aware... need to be aware of that. Educate their employees. Call 911 if you have to before it gets out of hand. I don't know what else we can do. I don't wanna close any of the bars. We're not gonna do that. And anyway, that's all I got. Thank you.
I like doing a dance up here. Well, actually, I wouldn't mind if some of the bars closes. When I moved up here, and actually, before I moved here, there were a lot of antique stores on Sutter Street, and it was a great place to shop. I probably bought half of the furniture in my house there in the seventies. So that's giving away my age, but not really. It's out there in the paper. But I really think we should encourage the businesses that sell alcohol to employ bouncers and to help the bartenders identify people that are getting a little bit over the top and either help those patrons call an Uber earlier in the evening before they start getting into trouble. I know that nobody wants to call the police when somebody's getting out of control, but people feel that, you know, they're a little bit afraid. They don't wanna insult somebody, or they don't wanna make somebody come back. But it's for the safety of the patron as well as for the improvement in the behavior in the historic district. So I don't know how we can encourage the businesses to have more bouncers, but I think that that would be helpful. Again, it's like a big-city problem in a little city. Thank you.
Oh, boy. How many of you remember the Sundance Saloon? When I started here, there wasn't that many alcohol places, but those that were gave us a lot of hassles. I remember rolling into a lot of calls in front of the hotel in the hacienda. Always made their margaritas way too strong. So anyway, that's gonna happen. At last I heard, I think, if I stand corrected maybe, but I think there's thirty-seven ABC alcohol permits on Sutter Street alone. That's a lot. That's commerce. You know, I'm not sure what we can do about that. But there's too many. And I also think personally that the Chamber of Commerce is supporting too many beer functions on Sutter Street. I think that Sutter Street's such a jewel and such a gem that we can have many other events, fundraisers and stuff for the various service organizations that don't necessarily have to have beer. It's also my understanding that when those events do go on, it doesn't really help the businesses of Sutter Street. They're not really affected very much. They don't get a lot of business. Just a lot of people that are buying from food trucks and things that are brought in. So I don't know if that's such a great idea all the time. I know it's a good fundraiser, but I think that we should look at some other things down there. Again, you can't stop stupidity. You can't stop rudeness. But you can kinda curb a little bit of the alcohol situation going on around here. I know you've had people, a lot have been at your place at night. I remember hearing you talk about that, and I thought, "Oh, boy, that's bad." I've rolled on many of those calls myself. And like you said, it's not fun to deal with the drunk at two o'clock in the morning, not to mention the crashes that they cause. So anyway, let's see what we can do to work on all that. Let's encourage the businesses to serve a little less alcohol, maybe get ABC involved a little more in some stings, and keep moving in that direction.
I don't know. I've been sitting here for three people now, four, sorry, Barbara. Four people, and trying to come up with a really good solution. And I don't know. I think there's a lot of different options that we could do. I think one of the things is exactly what I talked about before. If we had timed parking permits up in the residential areas that didn't allow parking of non-residents at night, that might help. That's one of the things that would keep people down on Sutter Street. And I think also, probably one of the bigger things that I talk about a lot, is we need to build other places to have events. So we need to build more gathering places. We need to build places where people wanna go, people wanna congregate. And gathering places can be anything. It can be a walk along the river. It can be a place for a concert. It can be anywhere you go and you run into your neighbor, an acquaintance, or even a friend. Because when you run into someone accidentally and you have an accidental meeting, it creates community and it creates a bond that strengthens our community. I just think that if we had less events and focused more events off of Sutter Street, then we would have an opportunity to eliminate, or at least severely reduce, some of the problems that are associated with alcohol on Sutter. And then just keeping people out of the residential districts. I can't imagine having one of the beautiful homes up there, Glen, yours is as well, and getting up Sunday morning and going out and picking up vodka bottles and God knows what else. So we just need to keep them out of that area, and I think that's probably a decent
Well, like Rob, I don't wanna necessarily belabor the point. I remember this question from the last two events we had here, and nothing's really changed. And I don't think it's really a problem that needs a new solution. We have laws on the books to address these sorts of things. It's just like speeding in residential neighborhoods. We have laws to address them. It's a matter of enforcement. If I'm your council member, I will work with FPD to get a task force going to enforce the laws that are on the books. If people are rowdy, they're gonna be put in the tank. If they're driving drunk, they're gonna be arrested. It's not that complicated. We just need to take the time to invest in the enforcement resources we need to enforce the laws that already exist.
This is also a problem that we talked about, I think, that same night that we were talking about parking. And I think that the entertainment district ordinance was a really good thing for the residents. I can tell you that since that ordinance went into effect, where basically all of the bars had to shut down earlier during the week, and I think they were even reduced by an hour on the weekends, I stopped getting a lot of the really unpleasant emails that I was getting, and I stopped getting as many phone calls about what was happening on Sutter Street. I think that, I'm not sure that the new wine tasting rooms are necessarily contributing to this because they don't stay open late enough. And, you know, for anybody that drinks wine, you're getting this much wine of three different wines, and then you're moving on and going somewhere else. So I don't think that's the problem. I think that, and frankly, personally, I think I've seen an improvement. I come down here at night, at eleven o'clock at night, maybe it's not late enough, but I will drive down Sutter Street just to see what's going on. There's been changes in the management at the Folsom Hotel. I think that's been a significant improvement. I think there's been changes in the management style at the hacienda, so I think that's been an improvement. And I know Murray at Powerhouse has been paying a lot more attention with his bar staff and the bouncers that he's employed all along to make sure that the bad seeds are not getting in there. With regard to the fact that, are there beer bottles and stuff on the weekends? Absolutely. And that is really something that shouldn't be happening. And if it needs, if we need to have Folsom PD spend more time down here on the weekends like they used to on Tuesday nights before we got the entertainment district ordinance done, then we need to make that happen.
I think in instituting a sort of a swing shift for maybe two uniformed police officers that do just kinda walk the street, Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, the nights that are the busiest, maybe from seven at night till three in the morning, would be a great way to not only cut down a lot of the problems before they become a problem, but a great way to build interactions with our local police with a lot of the regulars that are the ones down there. I remember one time, my wife and I were down there when Folsom PD was kinda doing that, and they came and sat down with us for a while, introduced them to a few of our friends that were all local. And everybody, when the police left, everybody thought that was awesome. It was a good way to kinda talk to them without, you know, having the sirens on behind your car if you're getting a ticket or whatnot. And it was really cool, and everybody liked it. So I think maybe two uniformed cops, if not every week, every other week, where there's not really a set schedule, you just know there's police down there regularly. I think that would do a lot to deter any issues and make people feel a lot safer while
So, same problems, twenty-five, thirty years. I know that Figaroa, Mormon Street, they get it pretty bad. I was listening to NPR Radio the other day, and they were talking about breath analyzers. And I thought, "Well, why don't bars have those free where people, you know, or the people at the door can say, 'Look, you're too drunk. We're not gonna give you any more alcohol.'" I mean, I think that's one way to slow it down. I went down the street a couple of years ago and counted all the bars, and we had over thirty-three that did serve alcohol with food or just a bar in and of itself. I think that's way too many bars on the street. You know, when I moved here, we had antique stores, candy stores, Patsy's Soda Shop, and the complexion of the street is just kinda reminds me of that story with Jimmy Stewart where the town changes, that Christmas story, where the town just completely, "It's a wonderful life." I've thought about that with Folsom. I thought, "You know, what happened to our sweet little calm town? And now it just seems so raucous and out of control." And, you know, I know so many people on Figaroa and Mormon Street that tell me, you know, the problem's not going away. It hasn't gone away. The entertainment district may have helped a little bit in that all the rowdy people that were coming from other parts of the region were coming to the Powerhouse Pub. But we've gotta do more. Gotta do more.
I guess I'm not gonna be popular. I'm a fan of the bar scene. I love the bar scene. I like going down there. I like to have Fridays and Saturdays to listen to bars play music. Young people coming around and watching these bands play eighties and nineties music. Has anyone asked what the bar people that own the areas, how much money they've lost over the last couple of years? How much time and money they've lost with building a crowd full of people who will come in on a Friday and Saturday night and pack the place in, paying money that's then changed into tax money for our community? And these people who are ruffians that are coming into our town are bringing money into our town. They're not necessarily ruffians. If you have a police presence at the door when they're coming in and when they're going out, they cease to be ruffians. They start to be people who say, "Okay, well, we gotta behave ourselves because we're in someone else's house. This is our home. And if we start letting people change our historic area, then what are we doing? I don't understand what people want them to do downtown. This needs to, a police presence is what we need. A bigger police presence up in the back where the housing and stuff's at, where people are parking and doing the stuff they shouldn't be doing. If they would roll through there four or five times a night and just watch what people just stop, I've seen them do it down on Sutter Street myself, where they've watched people walk out and they stop them there. If you can catch up on them around the hill, you can stop a lot more problems. Police presence is where it's at. It's not about shutting the bars down or shutting down people who are trying to, I mean, how long has Folsom Hotel been there? Eighteen hundreds, yeah? So if you move in next door to a pig farm, you can't tell the pig farmer, "He's gotta get rid of all of his pigs because it smells." It's a bar area, and I think that's what it needs to remain.
I think I'm going to play the same answer what Mark was saying. All answers have been, you know, great ideas here. But this is what I would, you know, this is my first time running for City Council. I know Chad mentioned, and even Carrie, a couple of others mentioned. You guys are asking the same question every time. Means, this is an issue for you guys, for the residents. I don't know whether it is a collective question from the Sutter Street businesses and the residents together, or, because closing the bars usually the business is not going to be very happy. And putting a cop in front of any of the businesses, I like, you know, staying away from, you know, cops. No one will drink more than one or two. That's a loss for business. I think you guys are looking for some answers from the city. And I'm not going to say the current City Council is not listening to you or not doing, because I have a great respect for our city councils, in the past ones and even the current ones. I think there should be a common agreement and understanding among the residents here who has been living fifty-plus years and so many people, and the small businesses and, you know, every other things, antics can sell great up to six o'clock or seven o'clock. After seven o'clock, what? So I don't know. I'm not giving the, you know, some answer, which probably may be, you know, picking from my brain, not knowing, deeply talking to the residents. So I'm hesitant to give a resolution. But I like my colleagues who are given, you know, some of them breath analyzer, you know, it's technology, and, you know, those are all great. But even I myself is not convinced yet, when you guys are asking every time the same question, and maybe this number of people are giving answers, again, after two years, we are coming back, and the question is coming again. We have to sit together. That's all I can say. Agreed upon solution, we have to develop and execute whatever it is. Thank you.
So I said in my opening statement that I do my homework. And clearly, if I'm elected to the council, I'm going to have to stay up later and start patronizing the bars for the sake of research. Most people say nothing good happens after midnight. I'm kind of a nothing good happens after nine PM kinda gal. I do have two suggestions that I have not heard mentioned. The first doesn't require any government intervention at all. And that is, we, the residents of Folsom, have got to patronize the other businesses. We all have Not Too Shabby, Snooks, the antique stores. Keep those businesses in business. Make other businesses that are not establishments that sell alcohol want to come to Folsom and open up a shop on Sutter Street. I get my hair cut by a gal on Sutter Street. I go to Snooks. I go to Not Too Shabby. That's what we all have to do to make Sutter Street thrive with businesses that are not just bars. Second thing, I think that we could do for the special events is to set up some temporary barricades so that when those special events end, we can direct the traffic where we want it to go, which is not through the neighborhood. As has been mentioned many times, a lot of it comes down to greater enforcement from the police department, which incidentally is also part of the solution if we talk about having permit parking in the historic district, which I'm more than willing to have that discussion. But permit parking means nothing if you don't have enforcement.
Thank you. Believe it or not, that's gotten through two questions.
I know.
We're moving along. Okay, the next question, let's keep going. You waited a long time, so we'll get the first one for you, Sarah. "Sutter Street and its surrounding residential neighborhoods are governed by the Historic District Development Guidelines that are supposed to be applied in buildings and development within the historic district. Recent proposed developments have asked for, and in a number of cases have been granted variances in relation to parking, height, setbacks, and architecture. What would you do to ensure that these guidelines are followed?"
Right here are the Historic District Guidelines and Chapter seventeen point five-two of the Folsom Municipal Code. This has been my reading for the last couple of days. I am very much a policy and procedure person, and I think it's really important that we remember that the role of the City Council is to make policy and to see that those policies are carried out. And so seventeen point five-two and the Historic District Guidelines are the only things that should be guiding the Historic District Commission as to whether something gets built or not. I can love the project, but if it doesn't meet the guidelines, I have to deny it. Conversely, I can hate the project, but if it meets the guidelines, I have to approve it. So I think we just have to remember what the role of the council is. We set policy, and we see that those policies are carried out. If you start making too many exceptions and granting too many variances, what good is having a policy?
This is YK again. And I love what Sarah is taking. I'm going to borrow those ones, you know, the hard copies, even though I was leaving the, you know, soft copy. I think I believe in, you know, I know our city manager was just sitting here, and Dave is also listening. He's our public works director. You know, usually, whatever the community wants, that's what probably City Council is going to be putting in the policy to start with. And city great staff are going to be enforcing it. That's how it's supposed to be wherever, you know? All these elections and governments, by the people, for the people. It's not that for the City Council, five members sitting. I think I believe in it, and our City Council definitely, you know, will be, you know, listening. I have seen last two years, I go to every City Council meeting, people come and put their problems in front, and City Council is very open to listen. If we think, all the residents think there is some concern, the policy is not being executed, I think those policies- I think those policies are not in set in stone. Can be amended to do what is right for our community, because the same policy may not be applicable on the Costco side, because that's a different community and the neighborhoods are different. That's how probably I'm going to take this issue and address it accordingly. Thank you.
I'm a believer in following the rules of the rules. If it's a written law, written rule, you follow it to the letter. If you need to change it, you change it. You vote for it. Everybody gets a vote. We change the rule to be able to, variances or whatever. If it's not in the rulebook, if it's not the law, then we don't follow that. They can ask for it and that's fine, but then we put it up for a vote and if everybody else says no, then it says no. Policy of democracy, yeah? There we go.
Okay, so I was asked, as well as another resident in Historic District, probably fifteen, twenty years ago-ish, by Loretta, who's here tonight, to review the guidelines. I reviewed the residential portion and my friend reviewed the commercial part of it. I sat on the Historic District Commission for two years. I voted no on the street being gutted, the trees being taken out. I didn't last long. That was a no vote in November and by December I was off. So it's kind of a, kind of a good old boys' club we have going in that I don't believe the residents that come before the H D C and sometimes even the Planning Commission, I've been on the Planning Commission for over seven years, and they're not getting heard. They're not getting what they want. So, you know, I'm not for variances, parking variances, especially in Historic District. It's just wrong. It's the wrong thing to do. So we have some houses in on Mormon Street that look like big boxes. How did that happen? Well, they got variances. And they don't look like they fit at all in Old Town. So I would look at the people that are on the boards, on the commissions, and talk to them about, you know, what are you doing? And let's get, you know, if we have three new people on the council, we have, we get to change, if I get elected, I get to change seven different commissions with people like you that care, that put up meetings and, and try to figure things out, instead of people that are set in their ways and allowing these commissions to go afoul.
Jennifer hit the nail on the head with some of what she said. I sit on the Planning Commission right now for nearly two years and while I, I do not serve on the Historic District Planning Commission, that, that's the way it works. The, the planning commissioners that are involved with the Historic District were appointed by council members. You guys are the people that should be on the Historic District Planning Commission. You guys are the ones involved. You guys are the ones that, that truly care. I don't know that it should be people that aren't from the area, that don't live in the Historic District. You guys are the ones that it, that it affects. You guys are the ones that really have to make sure you come to the meetings to get your voices heard, because it's really hard when you're on a commission. Developers have very easy access to the city. You know, they're, they're able, they have meetings often, they're, they're pushing plans through, they're, they're, they're in, in front of the city staff a lot. And that isn't a bad thing. That's what they're supposed to do. But the problem is, is when we're on commissions and we're trying to fight the fight, the residents aren't coming out. So your voices don't get heard. So when you're on a commission and a certain project may come before us and they're asking for certain setbacks and variances and no one's there to speak against it from the, from a citizen standpoint, it's kind of hard to, to toe that line when the city may recommend approval of the project. So that, that's what I think. You get a nice, strong council that isn't backed by big developer money and then you're going to start getting appointed to those type of positions. And then it's going to be residents first rather than, you know, other interests first.
We're talking about the Historic District, so let's stick with the Historic District. The Historic District Commission, just to your point, has five prescribed positions that need to be filled. There's a business owner, there's a resident, there's somebody with historical background, there's an architect, and I think we changed it from architect to planner, and I can't remember what the last one is. The two people that are appointed from the Planning Commission to serve on the Historic District Commission are, are not chosen by the council. That's chosen by the Planning Commissioners themselves, just to clarify that. With regard to the, the Historic District Guidelines, that started actually when I was on the, the Planning Commission and then was approved after I went on to the city council. Yes, we should be following those guidelines, but they are in fact guidelines. The stuff that happens in the Historic District is not being done by big outside developers. It's done by single owners of a single building and everything that I'm aware of in the recent past that's, that's actually been built or proposed on Sutter Street have been somebody that's been in the, in the Historic District for a long time. Occasionally, there are variances. Maybe they're good ones, maybe they're bad ones. Historically, whenever there's a project that's happening in the Historic District, I hear about it. All of the council members have historically heard about it. We discuss it. We'll meet with anybody that, that wants to meet with us, at least I have. And that's kind of how things have been done. So it's not like it's a situation where big developers have come in, nameless, faceless people are making decisions. You guys know that's not the case. And if you have something to say, we're available to listen. And there's been a lot of projects that haven't been approved. There's been some that have, some that people didn't want to move forward with, like the Steakhouse Building. It's turned into a great building and it actually provided its own parking. So I think in most instances, we've done a good job.
Well, look, I don't think this question is actually too dissimilar from the previous one. There are problems people want addressed and there are policies and laws, in this case guidelines, in place to address them. And I think this is why, and I'm going to circle back to an idea I pitched last, last time around. This is why I think it's time for Folsom to really look into district representation instead of at-large council. I think the Historic District is going to have in the future a lot different needs than people who say move into South Fifty or live in the central city. So I don't think it makes much sense anymore to keep electing five at-large council members. I do think we can, I'm not sure how it would break up if we kept it at five, but I do think it's time for Folsom to look at district representation, because you folks in the Historic District have particular needs that someone who say lives over by the golf course may not really understand and be able to represent as your councilperson. So that's what I would do to address these kind of issues. I would get our city to finally adopt district representation. So you are heard, or you're represented by someone who lives here and cares about your particular issues.
I think I would probably, I would probably work to change the way that the Historic District Commission works from a standpoint that if there's a deadlock position or if there's a no position, we'd have an appeal process. I don't know if there's one in place today, but I think the appeal process should be heavily resident focused to make sure that we get all the information from the residents. And it brings up a good point, because right now, our city is completely 100% focused on action from you to come to the city for everything. If you want to understand what's going on on, on Sutter Street, you got to go. If you want to understand what's going on in city council, you have to go. And you have to know when you're going to go, whether there's a topic or something coming up that relates to you. And I think this is old and archaic and we need to change that process immediately. I think that we should be able to have a situation where you as a resident can simply define an area. It can be as simple as drawing something on your mobile phone and saying, I want to know about everything that happens in that, or I want to know about parks, or I want to know about developments. And anytime anything that triggers that inside that area, you get something delivered into your inbox or you get something delivered right to your mobile device. Government should come to you. You shouldn't have to come to government. And I think if we couple those together, one of the big things that I hear over and over again is, well, residents don't show up. They don't get involved. And I think you don't get involved because you don't know what's going on. And so if we deliver that information and push that information out to you, I think we'll have a much better support from our residents coming in. And I think in the long term, it's going to keep you more informed and it's going to make better decisions for everybody, because, I'll tell you what, these commissions and the councils, when residents show up, they get heard. They just need to show up. And so we need to get you guys there and that's by delivering the information that you want directly to you.
Boy, this is a challenge. I'm not really sure where to begin on this, because I, I like a lot of things I've heard and I disagree with a lot of things I've heard too. I agree that it would be great to have a technology way of getting a hold of information, but I'll bet at least half or two-thirds of people in this room don't live on their phones, don't live on their computers and wouldn't know how to even get that information. I, for one, I use my phone for business all day long and I don't want to chime in all day long. But I think we have a system now in place where all you got to do is just look. You can find out what's out there. You can find out when your topics are coming up at the city council. And I, like I said before, your group is powerful. The city council, I think, when you guys are going to show up, they, they, they go, oh boy, we better be on our game. And I think that they, they respect you. You know, you're, you're a good group and you're a powerful group. This is the, this is, this is the heart of Folsom right here. As we mentioned before, a lot of people from out of town come here just because of this region. So let's, uh, let's keep things real and not try to pander to some of these groups here all the time. I think the current commission system is working quite well. Like I said, their job is to report to the city council, a report, and the city council acts upon that. So there's a lot of laws that come in place. I, for one, was against a Sutter Street remodel, renovation project. I was just kind of crushed, because I loved that old, old area. I worked for so many years, all the peddlers, fairs and things. I twisted my ankle several times on the footbeat, but I was wrong. I got to say I was wrong. The improvements that remained, I love them. And we had to do it because of the ADA compliance stuff. So I was wrong on that issue and I'll admit it. But I love Sutter Street now. I go down there all the time. Bring out of town guests down there all the time. So let's just keep it going and let's be real, okay?
Uh, there's a couple of issues that I want to address here. And one of those is notification of residents when changes are proposed in the Historic District or for that matter, anywhere in town. Right now, the notifications go out to people that live within 300 feet of a project and that is often, doesn't include everybody that's actually interested in what goes on in that space. And that notification only goes out in the case when it's going to go to a hearing. Since the institution of the Accessory Dwelling Unit Act, January first of 2018, it is, it has fast-tracked the approval of granny flat type units anywhere throughout the state. And this rule was put into place to increase the availability of housing for, for seniors who want to move in with their family members or to increase the number of rental units that may be more affordable. And in that case, these projects are actually only going through the city planners who have the ability to approve a project. It doesn't mean that they don't have to mean, meet the Historic District Guidelines, but they do still have to comply with the variances that are allowed in those areas. So some of these things are being fast-tracked. It was for a good reason to improve the housing availability, but it's also limit the amount of public input that goes into a project. So I would like to see improved notification of the residents in an area, whether it's going to hearing or not. That would include putting up signage that's readable, not just an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper. And I would also like to see the residents and the district be more active at getting each other involved and keeping their eyes open for what's going on. I think it's important for the district to be cohesive and pay attention and help their neighbors out. Thank you.
All right, they stole them all again. Rather than repeat everything, I'm going to reiterate a couple of things. All great ideas, but, but I think the main thing that we need to take from this is, is we. We have a lot more say-so in our government if we would just make the effort. It's really important that, that, that that's what we get out of this. You can change policies. Rules are rules. I, I think we all agree. If it's, if it's on the books, if it's a policy, it should be followed. However, there are some situations where you need to look at each individual project, research its merit and decide if there's any kind of adjustments that would be fair. Now, now I think that's fair. We can't talk about that right now, because that, that would have to do with the individual project, so. But, but generally, rules are rules. And the, but the main thing is it's, you folks can change those rules. If you come to the meetings, if you go to your commissions, and, and I'm sure that there might be some people out here that are on the Historic District Commissions here, right? I'm, I'm guessing. I'm guessing there are folks here, yes. So that's the main thing. And the other thing that I want to add, it seems like a good time. One of my ideas, if I'm elected, is, is I want to bring monthly community breakfast meetings, where I will attend it, I will host it, and anybody and everybody can come and share those thoughts, share those ideas, share those concerns. And I want to do that on a monthly basis. I'll make myself available. If any other council members want to attend, and if the police department wants to attend, if the fire department wants to attend, great. But that's what I'm going to do if I'm elected. I'm going to hold those monthly breakfast meetings so we can all share our concerns. And that might be a good time to, to, to gather and get those ideas out. Thank you.
And you're buying?
Yeah. Well, not buying. We can share. We can share the cost. Thank you.
It's the large stipend that he's going to get, so.
All right, thank you. I just got warning about time. You don't know how frustrating it is for me not to have a turn in discussing each of these issues, and I think all, a lot of our namies do too. Okay? No, no, no. I'm going to ask one more question, then we'll have some questions from the audience and closing statements. This one you should be, answer quickly, I think. It is basically, what is your, I mean, oh, there we go. If elected to the city council, how will you vote on the future of the Corporation Yard property?
They didn't want you to have to wait the whole time.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question?
Yeah. What, how, what would you vote to do with the future of the Corporation Yard property? Wow, that's a good question. There's so, there's so many variables. There's so many ideas. Again, you can share your ideas at my monthly community breakfast. And together, we can decide on that. And, and I really mean that. It's not up to me to decide, really. It's not up to, to the rest of the council members to, to decide. Five people should not decide anything for you. Should not decide anything for the residents of Folsom. You need to get your ideas out. You need to share those ideas. So that's all I'm going to say about that. It's got to come from you folks. So whether I'm elected or not, it has to come from you folks. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
I went to the initial meetings that were held by the city two to three years ago about the use of the Corporation Yard, and a lot of ideas were tossed out there. And the conclusions from, I would say, the majority of the attendees there, that they wanted that area to remain open space and access for the residents of Folsom to the river area. And that's what I would support. I would like to see probably some of the meeting spaces that Rob has suggested down there, not necessarily adjacent to the river. This is a wildlife corridor. It's important that we leave that area intact. There's lots of trails down there already. But I think that this is probably the city's last shot at having a large space within the Historic District that can be used by residents and visitors.
This one's actually a little simple. I'll try to keep it short. This is up to you guys. I mean, that's the bottom line. I could sit down right now. This is up to you guys, as far as I'm concerned. City owns that property now. It's a long-term project. I've sought, I've looked at the location for it, South of Fifty. It's going to be eight to 10 years. It's going to be a long time out there. So... So, they've done a lot of studies already. I know it started some, uh, rumors going, 'cause the environmental impact reports have been looking at apartments and everything else. I hope everybody understands that's required by the city to do that. Uh, they, they're required to do these different studies for all kinds of contingencies. But I don't think that's gonna happen, especially with the changeover, the council members. I think they're gonna listen to you folks. They're gonna put down there what you wanna do. Here's my notes from the last River District thing. And, uh, I have my preferences, but, uh, it, it doesn't involve apartments, doesn't involve any development, other than what's good for enjoyment of the area.
Uh, I sit on the River District Subcommittee, uh, and worked really hard for that. I strongly oppose any housing. I strongly oppose any, uh, rentable space, or hotels, or anything that would destroy our river's edge. But I really support having people get down to the river and be able to utilize it. I talked to a lot of seniors in our community, and I ask them, "When have you been down to the river?" And they say, "Well, I've been down to the bike trails sometimes, but the bikes are moving so fast on there, I don't like to go down there." And I went, "Well, what about the river's edge?" And the answer is, "Oh, I haven't been down there in a long time. My knees aren't good anymore, I have no way to get down there." So, we need to, we need to look at the areas, and, and I shudder to use the word "develop," but what I just mean is community involvement, community improvement, to be able to get everyone of all abilities, all ages, down to the river's edge to enjoy probably our biggest gem of a resource in our entire city. Uh, we don't have to, uh, contrary to popular belief, we don't have to destroy wildlife to be able to get down to the river's edge. I can cite city after city after city. Uh, I went to also the corp yard meetings, every single one of them. Uh, the ideas that were shared were everything from a recreation of a Chinese mining town to putting working gold dredges out there to take a look at how the history worked. We need to keep our, our history, and it's very important that we do that. And I think our, our river area and the corp yard are extremely good ways where we can actually focus on that, but still be able to utilize our river. If you look at what towns like Boise, Idaho are doing, and Bend, Oregon, you'll see that they're utilizing their rivers in ecological ways without hurting the environment, and enhancing recreation, enhancing enjoyment overall. So, we don't need to put a recreation of an 1800s mining town in there, and we don't need a zip line to a bar, but maybe somewhere in between.
Well, I think people tend to forget that Lake Natoma isn't exactly entirely natural, but it is a natural part of Folsom now, to all of us. And, uh, regarding the Corporation Yard, uh, it belongs to the city, and that means it belongs to you all, and to all of us. And it should stay that way. And I think Rob's completely right on everything he said. Um, there should be virtually no development there, but as far as development goes, a way to make it accessible. I think one of the oddities of Lake Natoma being where it is in our city is it's, it's in-between everyone, but it's still hard to get to. Not everybody likes to kayak, or cycle, or run. And if you're not one of those people, it can be hard to get to the lake, to enjoy it, and to take advantage of that great resource that we do have. So, a waterfront park, pavilion, whatever you wanna call it, would be my preferred outcome for that particular area, but it should be, uh, land for the people, by the people, because it does belong to you.
I just wanna remind everybody that, um, this was about a year and a half ago. We actually did open a handicap access trail that does go down to the river. Um, that was a bit controversial, but it, in my personal opinion, came out great, and I was really, really thrilled to see a severely handicapped young man on the day that we did that, the opening of that trail, to be able to get down there. So, there are, there are locations where you can get down to the, to the water's edge. Has anybody ever been to the corp yard? Okay, I'm surprised that many of you have. So, right now, there is no direct access from the property that is currently the corp yard to the water. So, that in and of itself would require significant effort in order to be able to get to the water from that location. Um, I, as we sit here today, I have no clue what options could come up, as somebody said earlier, in the next eight to 10 years. And in fact, it's highly unlikely that I won't still be on the council eight years from now. So, somebody else will be making that decision. That is something that I would like to see us start planning. You know, we, we talk about things in Folsom like they happen overnight, and they just happen with the snap of a finger. That's not how anything happens. You guys that have lived here for a long time know that it was a 35-year discussion about what was gonna happen with the revitalization of Sutter Street. It was 20 years before Empire Ranch built out. It'll be 30 years before, um, Folsom Ranch builds out. And this is something that needs input, not only from just the people in the historic district, but people outside the district as well. That facility, those 17 acres, plus or minus, are owned by everybody in the city of Folsom, and I'm sure, despite the fact that you guys think that nobody else cares about it, there's lots of people that care about it. There's good and bad to making it a regional park. There's people that are sitting in this room that live near a trailhead, that have called me several times complaining about people, three or four cars parking in a trailhead. I get phone calls about the Veterans Hall, and if we were to make that a huge regional park, that attracted a boatload of people, it's gonna be a lot more traffic down in that district. And I'm not sure that that's necessarily what you guys want to see at the end of the day. I'm sure there's a lot of options that we can look at, and I'd like to see many, many more public meetings about what can be done, so that the public does have as much input as they wanna have in what the ultimate decision is, once the corp yard moves.
I personally do not want to see any type of outdoor amphitheater built, uh, any type of large construction go on down there. I don't wanna see trees being ripped out. There's a large part of the corp yard now that, that's relatively flat and already, uh, open, and if we were to put a small park or something like that in there, I would be okay with that. But otherwise, my personal opinion is to not develop it out, as some of the plans that I've seen. But ultimately, my job would be to, um, deliver what the residents want, more so than my personal opinion.
Okay, so, the Corporation Yard is a big part of why I ran for city council in 2014, and why I'm running again. I believe with three votes on the council, that we can save this land from being, from commercialism or housing. They've talked a lot about that during these two different charrettes, the River District, as well as the first charrette three or so years ago. I envision a learning center for children. Uh, I know at Oak Chan, our, um, third grade go to FEI Nature Center every year, because that's where the nature center is. And there, they learn about the plants and animals that are native to that area. I've talked to the garden club, and we'll talk to them again. They're very, uh, interested in helping getting this land cleaned up, rested. It's been, it's very dirty right now. It's got garbage trucks on it, and garbage cans, and everything else that, that isn't beautiful. But it is probably the most beautiful piece of land that we own as residents. Uh, the view shed is of the bluffs. If you kayak or, or bicycle, you know it's the only part where it's a little bit like the Grand Canyon, the erosion, it's gorgeous. And then below the corp yard are the islands. And I've kayaked through there many times, and I'm sure many of you have seen the baby fawn, the deer that have their babies there, because it's safe. Um, it's, it's a magical place. And when we go down there, it's like on Lake Natoma, for sure. It's like getting lost in the city, like the city isn't here. And you're in this nature preserve that is lovely. Uh, I would wanna secure it with three votes, because I don't want this to go up for a vote for the, from the people, because I know that developers will have a lot of money to hoodwink people's, uh, thoughts about what should be there, and that really scares me. Thank you.
Just to reiterate, it's, it's, at the end of the day, it's the choice of the people around, and, and if, if I get elected in, I'll listen to what you say. My own personal opinion is you shouldn't be tearing up any kind of nature that we have in Folsom. My, my wife rides about 100 miles a week on her bike. My daughter goes out, and she jogs the trails, and runs the trails, and tries to get me out there, and they're both dragging me out all the time. But we go out, and we see the trails, it's beautiful. And to damage any of that for any other, you know, for any reason, other than if you absolutely have to, I don't see any reason why you should go out and start destroying, um, a beautiful area to put a building or something there that, you know, we, we have buildings. We, we need more areas like that in Folsom. Thank you.
I'm gonna make it more short, this one. I know. Um, Mark started very well. We, how we want to make that Corporation Yard, and I think I'm certainly going to agree majority of them. Uh, it's not going to be any construction or commercial property, for sure. And, uh, I'm the Parks Commissioner. We talk very frequently how we keep Folsom distinctly nature. And I know Ernie Sheldon is sitting here, so I shouldn't be talking more about parks than him, but it is his, you know, guidance, even for Parks Commission. You know, bring the people close to nature. Have our parks completed. And I work in state, in Health and Human Services Department. I take care of the statewide Medicare, Medi-Cal program. My office is very next to State Capitol Rose Garden. I can see from my office everyday rose garden, the beauty of the rose garden. I brought this one to the Parks Commission, you know, a couple of months ago. They're excited. We have to bring a piece of that kind of golden value naturally divided a small rose garden to Folsom. And I see people going and sniffing each rose every time, and they feel it. And they feel it in such a way, all the pressure and, you know, things are going to be. I think that's how we have to keep that Corporation Yard. Keep that close to Folsom's, that logo and title, distinctly nature, close to, um, natural resources. That's how I'm going to, for sure. I'm not going to vote for any commercial or any development for that one. But you has to have a strong voice in this decision, no doubt about it. And my philosophy is always, listen more. Thank you.
So, the short answer is, I don't know what I want to happen with the, um, Corporation Yard. I wanna hear what the residents have to say. Um, I want staff to come up with the pros and cons of everything that's proposed. Um, I wanna be assured that whatever we do down there does not attract, um, more homeless. Uh, as I said, I spent 12-plus years rowing on Lake Natoma. I know that lake like the back of my hand, but I have never been to the Corporation Yard. So, um, again, if I am elected to the council, I will do my homework, um, and I'll make a common sense decision.
Thank you all. Thanks to candidates very much. Uh, we're gonna take a few minutes here to allow some, uh, audience to ask questions. Um, it does remind me, though, when I was on the city council, knowing how we politicians act, I always put a big H-Y-T at the top. And that was to remind me, hold your tongue. Because there's a tendency of every councilman to want to comment on every issue or every item, and it takes forever. So what I'm gonna do is, if you have, have an audience have a question, uh, direct it to one of these, uh, candidates, and then if somebody really urgently wants to add something important that hasn't been said, uh, then let me know. But that way, we might move it along. Any questions? Now, the timekeeper's been raising his hand like this. I keep thinking he's asking a question, so I don't know.
He's got a lot of questions.
Right. Anybody? No, I think they're all like me, they like to argue with you about all these things, right? Yeah, go ahead, man. Timer, no.
He was just telling you your time is up.
Oh, all right. Any questions, or is it just too late tonight? Do you want us to go to closing statements? These guys have, uh, hung in there quite a while. Okay, let's do that. Let's go to closing statements. Let's start with you. And we'll go down this way, and then we'll go that way. Right. Two minutes. Start the clock.
I guess that, I'll try to be concise. Uh, well, I do wanna thank you all for listening to all of our answers tonight. Uh, I just kinda wanna run down some of the things I, um, have outlined in my ski Folsom plan, which is safety, kids, and infrastructure. I really think, um, I wanna address getting our, people slowing down on our streets. I live by a school, um, and it's pretty terrifying to see how fast some people drive their kids to school while kids are walking to school at the same time. Um, I'd like to address improved campus security, especially for our elementary school campuses. I think we'd be fools to think Folsom's somehow immune to the school shootings that have been, uh, cursing our nation. Um, I'd like to, along those same lines, get, uh, campus CCTV or surveillance systems, so our officers have better tactical and situational awareness. I'd also like CCTV systems at Rainbow Bridge and on the rocks at Lake Natoma, so they, we could finally catch those who are defacing those, uh, treasured resources. Um, along those same lines, more police or traffic enforcement, and substantially increased fines for distracted driving are things I would address under safety. I'd also like to seriously take a look at how we address our homeless problem. Um, we, I, I believe we must help those who want help, and must be very firm with those who don't. I, I have some ideas. I don't wanna take up all the time talking about them now, but I'd be glad to have that conversation with you. Uh, for our kids, I think we gotta live up to our promise and finish our unfinished parks. Uh, we gotta be as strong as a council on anti-bollying measures. And I'd really like to work with FCUSD on getting vocational education back into schools. I'd also like a quarterly city council meeting expressly devoted to our middle schoolers and high schoolers, their issues, for our council to hear about them, um, them exclusively. Lastly, on the infrastructure side, um, this, I cannot do in 20 seconds, but I'll just say, if you're interested in something called municipal broadband, it is a project I am passionate about and would love to talk to you about it, and how it can help Folsom in the future, not only attract new jobs, but, uh, keep companies here that might leave, and really create, uh, new opportunities for the future of Folsom. Um, I believe our kids are the future, and if we want our future to be as bright as our past has been, we need to lay the groundwork now, instead of wishing we had done something later on.
I hate holding notes, but, uh, it, it helps me to remind me of what I, what I wanted to say. So first off, um, I wanna thank the historic district neighborhood and the residents for, uh, hosting the event. Glenn, thank you for being our moderator tonight, even though you forgot where you were and what place where you were, but that's okay. Well, we're gonna forgive that. So, uh, and everyone watching on Folsom TV and taking the time to watch who couldn't be here. Uh, it would be remiss for me not to thank my wife, Kristy. Um, you know, this is a tough thing to do. It's, it's hard to do this, and without someone standing behind you, it's impossible to do. Uh, and finally, a quick shout-out to my daughter, who's here on break from Oregon State. She's really civic-minded and wanted to come, and I kept telling her it was gonna be boring, but she didn't wanna hear that, so... Uh, I've served the residents of Folsom for many, many years. I've demonstrated my commitment to show up and be held accountable. In the next four years, uh, if I get elected, I'll work with my council colleagues to advocate for our parks and trails, and ensure that our developments are responsible and sustainable. I'll also ensure that Folsom's rich history is preserved, 'cause I think we don't pay enough attention to the history, uh, of our great city. We have an amazing history, and we need to, to really bolster that a lot more. But ultimately, it's the residents that have the power to say that who's gonna lead the city for the next four years. I hope that you will share in my enthusiasm for the city, the people that live here, and vote for me on, on November 6th, because I'd be honored to be your choice to lead Folsom into the future. And then, of course, since I'm gonna say something everybody else should say, grab a sign on the way out. Just go ahead and grab yourself a sign. That's my, that's my commercial.
But only grab my sign. I, I think I have probably got more years in the city than anybody up here. 35 years, long time, worked here. Um, I've seen it grow. I fell in love with it right away. It's, I chose to graduate the Sheriff's Academy in a Folsom PD uniform, 'cause I knew this is where I wanted to work. I love this town. I absolutely cherish this town. I've raised three children here, love everything about it, darn close. But I do think we can still make it better. Uh, your voices are powerful, as I mentioned before. Um, keep doing what you're doing. Uh, you know, they're gonna listen to you. You guys, you've got a strong voice. I, I belong to a thing called Redfin, it comes over my phone, drives me crazy. But anyway, um, when I occasionally see a historic district home come up there, oh my God, your property values are insane. 800-square-foot houses for $500,000. Everybody flips them, makes them even more valuable. Uh, you're lucky. And, you know, it can't be all bad if your property values are that high. So, one of the candidates not here tonight has thrown out an idea, which was intriguing to me, about, uh, remodeling the Dan Russell Arena. I'm not gonna talk about it, 'cause he's not here tonight, but just put that on your radar, folks. Um, he wants to turn it into an entertainment venue, so... Public safety, I'm extremely public safety oriented, of course. Um, this is my town, I wanna keep it going. Uh, I wanna continue to serve the citizens here of Folsom. No longer a reserve officer with Folsom PD, I retired out of that. No longer a reserve officer with Folsom PD, retired out of that at the end of last year, but I want to continue to serve my city. It's basically a volunteer job and I've been doing it for 35 years. Keep doing what you're doing and please stop by the tables in the back and talk to me if you have any questions because I do want to listen to you.
I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and I've learned a lot from the other candidates. I think there's a lot of very good ideas that have been proposed this evening and I'm open to hearing more ideas from the public as I get out and about in town. I've heard a lot when I've been out canvassing from residents, things that haven't been brought up before. One thing that I really am focused on is keeping our natural spaces as natural as possible. I brought that up a little bit. There's been some complaints that we don't have access enough to the river, but I'd like to point out there are at least four access points on this side of the river at Willow Creek. There's a trailhead that comes up to Out of Bounds. There's access behind Karen's Bakery and we did build the handicapped access trail with a platform over by the Lake Natoma Bridge. And the reason I'm bringing that up, I think it's important for people to know that they can walk the trails, but they can also get up to use some of our restaurants and other facilities along the trails by only getting, walking a block up off the trail into an area that has some services. I also want to focus on us developing more affordable housing, but not putting all of that in one or two areas of town. It needs to be dispersed throughout town. We have a lot of teachers, daycare workers, service workers who can't afford to live in this town and are spending hundreds of dollars on gas and car maintenance just to get to work every day. The traffic problems, I think we've talked about those to excess. I have a long history of working with residents and I'd like to see the city encourage the neighborhoods to kind of band together, sponsoring neighborhood meetings throughout town, including the historic district. I think that's the best way to get the best ideas out there, find out what the neighbors' concerns are to make sure that we serve all of Folsom's residents. Right on time.
Thank you very much for coming. This, I really enjoyed this. The historic district in my thinking is something of incredible accomplishment and civic pride. And it should be considered a local and regional treasure. And in that vein, it should be protected at all costs. But in order to do that, we first must define what needs protecting. I believe we need to protect first what is threatened the most, our way of life. But more specifically, what we want our way of like, life to look like in the future. This election isn't about who can do the job. We can all do the job. It's, but it's about whom you can trust to do the job the way that you want it done. You need to decide who up here is using this opportunity perhaps as a stepping stone to something beyond Folsom that they consider bigger and better. And who is here for the right reasons? And who will represent your best interests and not some special interest groups that have specific narrowly defined desires? Because what is good for Folsom's historic district has to be good for Folsom as well. We're all in this together. I encourage you to please contact me to share and educate me on the real issues. I firmly believe that anything that can be done to keep our historic district vital and relevant is worth doing. And I will support every effort to, to that end if elected. I want to thank my fiancee and, and campaign manager Darlene, because it's her fault, I wouldn't be doing this if it wasn't for her. And lastly, tomorrow is a very significant anniversary for our country. Sometime tomorrow, please take a moment to reflect and remember and honor. All gave some, but some gave all. Thank you.
I don't usually prepare closing statements for these sorts of things because I think a lot of what I want to say has to do with what's been said before. We have a wonderful city. We have the 13th highest median income in the state of California. And I'm sorry, Mike and Jen, I saw you guys grousing when Scott made the comment about the, the average value for housing down here. But on average, the value of properties in the historic district, Scott's right, it's about twice what the value of my house is per square foot. One of my girlfriends just bought on Percifer last summer and she paid $500,000 for a 900 square foot house. So everything is not as doom and gloom as I think some people would like to think that it is. If there's issues, yes, we need to sit down and we need to talk about them. And I am happy to say that for the most part, I get more phone calls from people in the historic district than I do in other parts of town. You guys pick up the phone or send an email as opposed to just complaining about it on social media or at the grocery store or wherever. Now I'm starting to see the same kind of things on Nextdoor. Pick up the phone, call me, we'll sit down and talk about it. We'll find a reasonable solution to the problem. I've served on this, on the city council for the last 20 years. I think I've made myself very accessible over that time period. I'm an engineer. I think I'm really, really good at finding solutions as opposed to just pointing out, pointing out problems. I'm looking forward to serving you for another four years and feel free to give me a call. I've got literature in the other room, it's got my cellphone, my email, my Facebook page on it. I look forward to hearing from you and to your support on November 6th.
For the nearly two years I've been on the planning commission, I've been pretty readily accessible to the folks involved with the historic area. And I've listened to the concerns that you've had and I've tried to implement and make sure those, that your voices were heard at our planning commission meetings. It's not always, it's not always easy to do, but I've been a champion for the issues that are, that are down here in the historic district. One of the, the things I've heard mentioned several times this evening is that we talked about this six years ago, we talked about this 12 years ago. Let's stop talking about it. Let's fix the issues that are here. You guys have legitimate concerns, legitimate issues that aren't issues that can't be fixed in just a few months. Sitting down, getting a game plan together and simply implementing them. I own and operate two businesses in Folsom and to have a continuing problem for six to 12-plus years wouldn't be acceptable for either of my businesses and it shouldn't be acceptable for your neighborhoods. So if you elect me, I will be another champion of your cause and we'll end up getting results. We'll end up getting the job done. Thank you.
Okay, so Scott, I've got you beat, 38 years. So I moved here, as I told you in the beginning, to teach school. Got a job pretty quickly and bought a house. Live in the same house 34 years on Sibley Street. I used to go to City Hall and sit down and just listen in to what council was talking about, correcting spelling tests usually. So in 1985, the city of Folsom at that time was discussing what to do with the city corp yard. That's the first time I got up and said anything and you can see that on my website. I was a strong advocate, as I am now, to leave it alone. Don't do anything, no, no commercialism. I wanted to tell you my accomplishments. I am a charter member of the Historic Folsom Residents Association. I am currently a board member. If you're the president, I'm a board member. I sat at many city council meetings protecting Old Town. At one point, redevelopment wanted to put in a four-story hotel down on the railroad block. I was there till at least 11 o'clock protecting that, thanks to friends that told me about that meeting. I was the one that set up the meeting at Granite School for granny flats to be organized or here in Folsom for affordable housing. 2001, I sat on a board for, with 50 neighborhoods around Folsom to protect Folsom. They were looking at lots where affordable housing could go. I served two years on the historic district commission. I've held candidate night in this room and at the vets hall by myself with my friend Bob back there who was the moderator. Thank you, Bob, for all those years. I hosted the 2014 holiday home tour, had 500 people through my home at Christmas time and we just got four-way stop signs in my side of Riley Street, thanks to efforts of historic residents that got it on the other side, so. I've been busy.
First of all, let me say thank you for having us tonight. And I can't believe, as I was talking earlier, I didn't see anybody rolling their, well, other than my wife, but that's her job is to roll her eyes at everything I say. I didn't get a tomato thrown at me, which my son will be happy to hear. This is my first election I've run. It's the first time I've stood in front of people and asked for your vote. I learned loyalty in the military. I learned doggedness in the military. You send a motivated Marine out to get something and he will get it and he will come back for you. Any of you out there that need anything, you call me, you vote for me, you've earned the right to call yourself. I'm with you. Not, not with anybody else. People that voted for me in the city of Folsom, I'm with you. So if you need anything, you know who to call.
Mr. Glenn and the committee and all the residents of the historic district, thank you for giving us this opportunity. Through those questions, we understand the concerns from all of you. And once you, we elect, you know, any of the three of us, we certainly understand, you know, what is right for this historic district. We must address that one. We don't want that, you know, question, the fourth question or third question is coming three times or four times again. We have to address it along with you. And again, I highly respect and current city councils and the past ones. They have done right what is needed for this Folsom. And in my view, the face of the Folsom has been changed over a couple of decades from a prison city to one of the best city to live in California. I want to, you know, applaud all the leaders who has done that, including all the citizens' support. But coming back to historic district, keep the historic district nature and I will certainly work hard to listen to all of you and make it happen. And going back to, you know, since I'm running for this office beyond historic district, you know, my top few topics where I'm focusing is public safety. I want, public is the eyes and ears of the public safety. And education, bring more job-oriented courses to Folsom Lake College and high school seniors, that's another one. And technology is certainly, you know, Rob and I conquer all the time, technology will definitely bring the value, it will definitely improve the values and services of our citizen. And again, we have a traffic, Folsom city is organically growing. We have to have a great plan and it is through listening to the community, we can put that plan together and we will continue keeping the Folsom the way we love. And please support me and every, just like my colleague said, you know, pick up one of the yard signs, you know, if you, thank you.
I just want to go over a couple miscellaneous items that I didn't get to touch on earlier. I think it's worth revisiting the composition of the historic district. For example, maybe it's not necessary to have two planning commissioners on it, maybe we only need one. But there is a practical reason why we probably cannot have the seven members of the historic district all live or own businesses in the historic district. And that is because if an item comes before the commission that would potentially have an economic impact on you, you're going to have to recuse yourself. And certainly we cannot have a majority of the commission recusing itself. Second thing I want to touch on was permit parking. As I said earlier, I am more than happy to, to have that discussion with residents. In my twenties, I lived in East SAC and Midtown, lived in neighborhoods and streets where there were parking restrictions or permitted parking. My mom still lives in the same house in Fair Oaks where I grew up. They were having a, a problem with fishermen parking in their neighborhood, doing some unsavory things. So they did go to the county and they now have permit parking only in her neighborhood. But I think one of the things we've learned on the school board with the parking issue, we have a Vista del Lago because it's so impacted and we have more kids who want to drive than we have parking spaces, is that when the neighborhoods go to the city and start implementing parking restrictions, all it does is move those cars from one street to the other street. So the challenge really is if this historic district were to go to some sort of permit parking or hourly restrictions is, what are the boundaries? Because we don't want to just move it, you know, make it one person's problem and then move it to somebody else. I hope tonight that I have demonstrated to you that I do my homework, that I speak plainly, that what you see is what you get. I invite you to check out my website at sarahakino.com. My Facebook page is facebook.com/electsarah. My contact information is on there or in the literature in the back and you're welcome to contact me anytime. And again, thank you to the residents for sponsoring this.
Thank you, candidates. As I'm entering into my senior years, I often worry about what's going to happen to the city when I'm gone, since I was holding it all together myself. But the fact, looking at this group, you really get a good feeling that we're, we're being followed by really good, honest, caring people. And so I feel very optimistic. The only reservation I have is that there isn't a lawyer among you, which is very odd when I was on the council with three, so. Anyway, I appreciate it very much. We want to give you all a hand right now. And who was it that said they really loved the bar scene? Was that Ken? Then the drinks are on Ken down on Sutter Street.
Thank you all.